Four exits that may be used. Exit one is on the west. Go out the door and walk into the field away from the building. Exit two is to the south. Walk through the door, cross the parking lot to the fields away from the building. Exit three is to the east. Go to the doors. Exit four, go through the doors. So, basically, exit. Four ways to get out. Just follow. I'll be the fast one.
Follow us, yes.
Or not. All right. The Board of Education will move into, uh, excuse me. The Board of Education accepts the minutes of the Board of Education meetings held on February 4th, February 6th, and February 7th, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have to ask if there were any questions. Okay. Treasurer's report. The Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the Treasurer's report for January 2019, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
Moved.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan, seconded by Mrs. Reed. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Cami. I just, yeah. Do you want me to leave this on for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
You're right.
Oh, you guys don't know me well. Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
So, we are going to do things a little bit out of order tonight. We're going to start with a STEAM presentation because we have some faculty members and some students who are involved in that presentation, and we want to get the little guys and girls home. So, it's a, it's a good education for everybody to learn what we're doing in grades four and five with STEAM anyway. So, I am going to introduce Mrs. Randy Arnold and Mrs. Curry, who are our STEAM engineers. And, do you get that?
Yeah.
And, and I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Arnold.
So, to the board and to Dr. Cami, thank you for having me tonight. It is my absolute pleasure to talk about STEAM. STEAM has happened here in Baldwin for the last two years, and it has been well-received, not only with students, but with parents, with teachers. It is just a dynamic program, and I'm glad to talk to you today about my favorite thing to do, which is to teach. So, I first like you to know that STEAM is an acronym, and it stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. But what I want you to take away tonight is that STEAM is an approach. It's an approach to learning, and what we do here in Baldwin is that we are building our critical learners. We are giving them those analytical skills to make them lifelong learners, to also, if you think about it, make that K-12 student ready, college and career ready. So, it's very, very dynamic, and I'm so, so proud to be part of it. So, if you agree with me, you can say aye. A universal truth is that every kid is naturally curious. They are innately wondrous about all things. And New York State, what they've done is, they've taken their standards, and I too think that they subscribe to those same tenants, that children's curiosity, they capitalize on it because every standard is, starts off with some type of scientific phenomenon, and the awe and wonder in the children's eyes are miraculous. We usually, as scientists, ask five different whys before we even delve into the subject, but they are really charged. It's a very rare occasion that I have a STEAM student that says, "I don't want to" today. It's usually, let's jump in and let's find out more. So, why our program here in Baldwin is so unique is, under Dr. Cami's direction, what we've done is, we've aligned our state standards with the fourth and fifth grade science curriculum. And how smart is that? Because now, we grow the global learner. The student now is supported from what they're learning in science in fourth and fifth grades, and now, they have a place to unpack it in a STEAM classroom. Right? When you and I were little, we didn't have a STEAM classroom. We were taught science, we were taught math, et cetera, but we didn't have a place to apply it. And now, they have a place to say, "Oh, I get it. That's interesting." And it really is quite remarkable to see. So, like I said, what I want you to walk away with is that it's an approach, and we're building those lifelong learners. What the state has done for us, if you notice in blue, green, and orange, is we are looking at the engineering and science practices. So, I, as a teacher, would use those science practices as an avenue into us, how we grow kids into our STEAM program. So, each child is charged with creating a prototype, or a model, a process, or a system to some larger problem, right? Some real-life problem. And what they do is, they have an opportunity to test that design, et cetera. So, what is the structure of our STEAM model? Here in Baldwin, what we've done is, we have STEAM in every single elementary school, grades four and grade five. Unlike some schools or some districts where a select few kids get to benefit, all of our students get to benefit. And why that's so special is, we believe every one of our students are talented, are gifted, and it may come to light in different ways, right? So, in addition to that, those three days a week, I might see children on the first two days for a double period. Why that is magical is because I have my classroom teacher with me collaborating. And you imagine this, if there are more hands on deck, so much more gets done, and it's a double period. It's just very, very remarkable. In addition to that, the final day of the week, usually on a Friday, is a tech day. It's a single period, and what happens in that tech period, it's an introduction to code. Children love it. They're instantly plugged in. And in addition to that, here in Baldwin, we think that our children are definitely producers. Instead of just consuming, we want them to attend to a problem by producing, right? So, we are using Flipgrid. We have some amazing professionals here in Baldwin. Our tech people are phenomenal, and as a result, our students are benefiting. One of the hallmarks of the STEAM program are the learning spaces. Notice that I didn't call them classrooms. You and I lived in a classroom. We sat in desks, in rows, et cetera. These learning spaces are so dynamic in that the space is fluid, right? So, everything is on wheels. If you need to go collaborate over here, you can go do that. If you need to sit on the carpet, you could go do that. If you need to go do research, there, the space, the pictures that you see do not do it justice. I strongly encourage you, if you ever have an opportunity to go visit any of those spaces, from the high school down to every single elementary school, please do so because you'll feel like you're in the Google offices when you walk in with your backpack and your skateboard, and you're going to go talk about really important stuff. The space makes the children elevate and rise to the occasion. They're very academic. They want to do well. They, it's, when you see little people, nine and 10-year-olds, and you'll hear some of them speak tonight, it's, you're like, "I'm not talking to a 10-year-old," but it's really, really, a great thing to watch. So, the engineering design process is how we get into STEAM. The engineering design process is not something unique to Baldwin. It is what real scientists and real engineers use to find a solution to a problem. It could be, "I need to get from point A to point B, and there's water. I build a bridge," right? So, for our young learners, we enter in through a citizen-science kind of lens, where we're saying, "We're part of the solution. We're part of this bigger planet. How can we contribute to fixing the problem?" So, I liken it to, in Baldwin, we're using the reading and writers workshop model. It's very similar. Children are autonomous. Children are guiding the learning because they want to, right? So, they generate the questions. They generate the ideas and the wonders. And somewhere around that purple and blue area, boys and girls are pushed into companies. And in the company, they have to make decisions. How do I spend my budget? What resources they use? And if you can imagine, the little fourth graders are clutching their folder because in that folder, they're making decisions, like, "Do we spend all of our $10 on the first design, or should we hold some back?" So, it drives their decision-making process, all the data that they are collecting. If you walk into our classroom around that create time, you think it looks like organized chaos. I don't think so, but their children are busily in their different areas, creating their solution to whatever problem is given. And then, at some point, they get to test and improve. Again, another piece that you should know about is that share, where Company A gets to talk to Company B. And why that's so great is because it's like Samsung talking to Google, right? "What are you doing over there? Why did yours work so much better than mine?" And they share that, those notes. I kind of stepped back because now, I'm the facilitator, and I'm watching them do the thinking and the guiding, right? So, fourth grade. Can I just bring up one of my students, Andrea Clark? She's just going to tell you how valuable hands-on learning is to her. If you could just welcome Andrea Clark.
Hands-on learning is physically doing the experiment. I think it's important because not only are you learning, but you're also having fun doing it.
Thanks so much. So, a wise person once told me that when kids are touching and doing, they're learning, right? They're processing, it becomes their own. So, as for my fourth graders, what happens is, we start each inquiry with a scientific phenomenon, and that's how I engage all the learners. But we also start with an essential question, and the fourth-grade essential question is, "What is energy?" A kid might say, "It's chemical energy. It's mechanical energy." And we really grapple with that for a while because they've learned about it in their classroom. And again, a feather in our cap is that we've aligned it to those New York State standards. So, they now really get to unpack it and make sense of it. At some point, they start researching. They start pulling articles from the web. They start bringing the articles that they found. We watch TED Talks, and we really just go deep and say, "Oh, this smart person said this. What do you think? Does it support what you think?" Et cetera. At this point, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to bring up another student who'd like to share her experience with you, Viviana.
Hi. My name is Viviana Drinkwater Lovicar. I have had STEAM for two years, and I love it. I like STEAM because I'm able to create solutions. For example, my class created a roller coaster with three loops. When I was in fourth grade, we created a solar-powered oven because we were learning about problems having, happening on the other side of the world, with pollution. STEAM makes me feel powerful, encouraging me to become an inventor when I grow up.
So, fifth grade looks a little bit different in STEAM because, fifth grade, it's remarkable to see how a child grows from grade four to grade five. Again, they're self-assured. Because of the beliefs that we subscribe to in STEAM, they are more self-assured and more ready to grapple with these more difficult questions. So, in fifth grade, they're grappling with, "Whose responsibility is it? Whose responsibility are the Earth's resources?" So, some child says, "I don't care," and some kid says, "I really care because, you know, I know about climate change or what have you." So, one of the things that we've done here in Baldwin, not courtesy of me, but because of our administrators, is we have collaborated with C-Tuck, a conservation organization, that brought in their environmentalists, that brought in their, that brought in their naturalists, and taught the children what real-life science looks like in the field. I'd like to bring up another student. His name is Ryan.
Hello. My name is Ryan Healy. This year in fifth grade, I went to the Mill River State Lake, the Mill River Lake State Park. The Mill River Experience was exciting and fun. As a student, as student-scientists, we've tested the water from the lake for oxy, oxygen levels and observed different types of living organisms in the lake. My friends and I have had a chance to apply what we learned in class. The scientific data that we collected is being used by scientists on Long Island. In my opinion, this is a great opportunity for student-scientists. So, STEAM for me was very fun and exciting because I got to learn science in a more fun way, in my opinion, because science in class, you're reading out of a book, but you got to test stuff and experiment, different things that you could do, that you wouldn't do in class, because there's just not enough space or, like, materials that you could use in my classroom, that we could use in a flexible place that we called the classroom, in my, the castle room, in my school. Fifth grade was fun for me because if we did different stuff from fourth grade, but fourth grade and fifth grade, they were both fun, and they weren't, like, any different from each other. So, fifth grade, we got to test, um, like, we got to make little cars, you could say they were called, and we would make them out of materials, and we could not use a max number, and you would have to be very smart and diligent with them because, depending on the size that you made, we would have a competition, how far they would go. With, in fourth grade, we did, we learned about how to make our own oven. If, like, in some places in the world, you can't have, you don't have as much electricity as we do here, the United States, so we made solar ovens, where you would use the sun to power your, um, like, power thing, and we tested it, power your, um, smores that we did with the solar ovens, and you would see how hot they would get if it actually worked. So, we kept, kept it there for a day, and it actually, the marshmallow actually got, as it would if you used it in a toaster, and the Hershey bar that we put with it actually melted. So, in, in, in STEAM, I learned that doing STEAM is just a great opportunity for people and for students, like, my age, in fourth and fifth grade. And I had a very fun time doing STEAM, and me and my classmates were very upset when the time came that we were not able to continue with STEAM any longer. So, yeah, that's what I have to say about STEAM.
That's what I was talking about. That's exactly what I was talking about, but he said it a lot better than I could. So, one of the things that I'd like to bring to your attention is this concept of students as producers. So, we don't want our kids consuming the video games and the la-la. We're saying, "You can make the la-la," right? So, this didn't happen, like, it wasn't my intent as STEAM was starting to unfold. It was driven by the students. I had a group of students say to me, "Six weeks is over," sort of like Ryan just shared, and they're like, "What's now?" They're like, "We need to call somebody. We need to write letters to our politicians. We need to, like, make video commercials. Like, this is not over. We're not done." So, what happened is, this little girl, you'll notice her authoritative tone, you'll notice her confidence. She decided that she wanted to make a PSA, and this is how it goes. Ryan, imply.
Semester, I learned about the water pollution in the Ganges River in India. We designed water filters and garbage transport vehicles to clean up the Ganges River. And the Ganges River is polluted with trash and with a lot, with lots of other stuff that humans have put in there. Ganges River is also known as the holy river, but they don't treat it as the holy river. So, why? I think we need to take action and start, and start, to start cleaning up the river with vehicles and filters, and to filter the water, and the government should take action, too. Need to pass laws and find anybody who does, who does anything wrong, like putting gar, throwing their garbage in the river. Every, every piece of garbage you throw down on the beach or throw in the water makes a difference. Think, if everybody in the world did that, how much garbage would that be? I think that we, that we need to start to clean up the Ganges River, and even just taking out one piece of garbage would make a difference. Thank you.
So, I wonder now, like, what she's doing. She's now in grade six, and you could tell that she also subscribed to those kinds of tenants of, uh, being a, being proactive and being part of the solution as opposed to parting the problem. One of the things that we are, that is great here is the benefits of STEAM. I could talk to you all night. I could probably fill a book about what are the benefits, but the ones that stand out to me are that our students are problem solvers, that they are the kids that are going to go forth out into the world, K-12 and beyond, and they're going to say, "Oh, that's a problem. How do I fix it?" Because we've built up their analytical thinking skills. Our student engagement is, you've heard from the three students plus the one in the video, that they are plugged in and they want to be part of the solution. Again, a feather in our cap is that we've aligned our engineering components of the New York State Science Standards with our fourth grade and fifth grade curriculum, so it's really starting to take root. And one of the things that I'm personally proud of is our STEAM night. We are truly growing beyond Baldwin because we're so great. What happened is, we started a STEAM night at Brookside School, and what happened were, the community came to support us. The elementary schools, elementary students brought their parents, and the student was their teacher for the night. And what they did was, they traveled from station to station. The robotics team, under the direction of Vincent Lees, he came and brought that team, and they interacted with our young students. Watching that interaction, interaction made me feel quite proud. Our local businesses here in Baldwin and beyond helped to defray the cost of our night, and it really helped us to be able to replicate it more and more throughout the district. And then, that collaboration with Malloy, they sent us their best and brightest students, and they were able to facilitate different classrooms and different activities. So, it was really, really quite remarkable. One of the ideas that's growing in my mind is a TED Talk, but maybe we wouldn't call it a TED Talk. We'd call it a student talk, and there would be articulation between our AP Environmental students alongside with our fourth and fifth graders, because our fourth and fifth graders want to know from them, "What are our next steps? What do we have to do?" There's some urgency to the matter. And then, if I could just close tonight and talk to you a little bit about these four Cs. I call them the scientific habits of mind. These scientific habits of mind are something that, if you speak to any of the kids, it might be a little bumpy in the beginning, particularly that collaboration piece, but we talk about, there was a young girl who went to Baldwin High School, and prior to that, graduated from Lenox School, and we all agree that she subscribed to this belief that you have to work together. All the things that you and I do in our daily lives, like make eye contact, like collaborate, like communicate, like all the things that you need to be a successful adult, she probably did. The woman I'm speaking about is Jasmine Monbelly. She's now a NASA astronaut, and she realized that dream right here in Baldwin, so I'm super, super proud to give her a little shout-out. Finally, what I'd like to say to you folks is, we're making the right decisions by kids, right? The STEAM program is something that I would assume would be replicated in districts across Long Island because we are so special, so keep doing the right thing. We are doing the right thing. And I'll just close, thank you, Mrs. Curry, with that final video.
So, I'm going to enter schools. The doors are open, so I'm interested in this because it helps kids go around, get their hands dirty. You get to change things around and think about what happens if the X is Y out there.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold, for an amazing presentation. Thank you to Andrea, Viviana, and Ryan. Thank you, guys. For your presentation as well. Seeing STEAM and being a part of the activity that did take place at Brookside, and just hearing my own children talk about their experiences definitely shows, as you said, we're doing the right thing, so it's great to hear all the effects and the experiences that the children are, are talking about. Does anyone have any questions to follow up on?
Just that I wish I was in fifth grade.
I know. Makes you feel like maybe we're not as smarter than the fourth and fifth graders, right? So, but thank you. Thank you. So, on that note, we're going, go ahead, Ms.
I just want to add one thing. So, I just, first of all, I want to thank you, Mrs. Arnold, and Mrs. Curry.
Thank you, Mrs. Curry.
So, what you all don't know is that, two years ago, we decided that we wanted to introduce STEAM into grades four and five, that we believed in an enriched program for all of our students. And we kind of threw it out there, and Mrs. Arnold stepped up to the plate, having never taught STEAM, having no idea what this curriculum was going to look like, because we didn't have a, we didn't pick STEAM out of a box, which a lot of people do. They'll purchase a STEAM curriculum out of a box. And instead, ours has really generated, not only from the standards, but from the work with an actual scientist. And Mrs. Arnold's in year two now, so I think she can breathe a little bit easier, but it was an incredible task that we asked her to do. I, I don't know anybody that doesn't love Mrs. Arnold, and that includes myself. And Mrs. Curry, who for the first year, this year, stepped up as our elementary technology specialist, coming out of a classroom that she absolutely adored, with a partner in her next classroom that she is best friends with, getting ready to have this crazy, unique room redesign that we had to put on hold because her partner was getting a new partner. But the two of them are really a shining example of the kind of staff that we have in Baldwin. We have teachers and administrators and, and, and all other staff, our custodians and our clerical staff, that will go above and beyond for the kids that are in this district. And so, I just want to thank you both, because not only was it an outstanding presentation, but the work that you do every day to support our teachers and our staff is really just outstanding, so thank you.
Yep. So, we're going to shift gears so that we can allow a break. The Board of Education approves the personal actions report dated March 13th, 2019, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
And amended.
As amended. Thank you. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Coles. Due to the fact that this is personnel-related, we cannot discuss this in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Cami for introductions.
So, in this PAR, we culminated months of work. We, in this personal actions report, the board appointed three new administrators to our district, and because of the level, we want to take the opportunity to introduce them to all of you. I'm going to start by introducing, first, I'm going to start by thanking the business office that is sitting, taking up the whole room over there, here in support of the person who we just appointed. The board just appointed as the new business, Assistant Superintendent for Business, because Dr. Draper has decided that he has arthritis and wants to hang out with his dog. We're not at all insulted that he chose his dog over us, but, but I want to thank the business office for coming out in support of, of our new Assistant Superintendent. I want to thank the Brookside family for coming out in support.
But I want to thank the business office for coming out in support of our new Assistant Superintendent. I want to thank the Brookside family for coming out in support of the new principal of Brookside. And I want to thank the high school family for coming out in support of the new high school principal. So I'm going to start by introducing Mr. James Robinson, who is here with his wife and his two sons. And his two sons are not babies. They actually had to change all of their plans to show up in support of Dad today. Actually, before I introduce our candidates, I want to explain to the audience the process that we use to hire. Because some might think that it is like private industry, and it is nothing like private industry. So when we have an opening in a district for a certificated area, that's for an administrator or a teacher, the first thing that we do is we advertise. We advertise online on OLS and on something called Frontline. We generally, depending upon the position, will take an ad out in the New York Times. In this particular case, we went out to the New York Times three times. Three separate ads for the New York Times. In addition, we have contacted many colleges directly, looking for people that they would recommend to us as experienced, good candidates. We go ahead and we look at the paper, we look at the resumes, we scan all those resumes for people that are qualified and people that are not qualified. So for example, for these two positions, you need to be certified by New York State in order to be hired to do the job. You can't, for example, for a business official, have worked for Morgan Stanley for the last 15 years, be a brilliant-minded business, and be able to get a job in a school district. It doesn't work that way. So the first thing that we do on the scan of the resumes is to make sure that the people who have applied are qualified to apply. Once we do that, we look at the experience, we make sure that they have experience that we think is similar. And then Dr. Gallo and I will do a screening interview with those candidates. After the screening interview, we'll narrow that down to people that we thought are a good fit. And then the entire cabinet will meet those people and have lengthy conversations with those people to see whether or not they deserve to work in Baldwin. When we identify which candidates we think are good, solid candidates, they go to a committee. And the committee is made up of teachers, administrators, clerical, sometimes custodial or buildings and ground staff. In the case of the high school, there'll be students on that committee. And those are feedback committees. They are lengthy interviews, sorry?
Parents.
And parents. Thank you, sorry. And we, by the way, do not choose the people on those committees. The PTA chooses the people, the parents, the Administrators Association picks the administrators, the Teachers Association picks the teachers, et cetera. The feedback committee, in some cases, is a big committee and is a lengthy process where they're asked many, many questions. They put on, they rate the candidates, they put their concerns and, you know, what they think are positive. All that information that comes back to Cabinet, based on the information on those forums, there's another final interview with the four people in the Cabinet. And then there is an interview with the Board. And based on all of that, candidates are chosen for those positions. So this is not a send your resume, you know, a couple people interviewed that person and, you know, it's honestly amazing that anyone comes back a second time. You know, and I can tell you that, you know, my reputation is, it's not an easy interview. And it's not about an interview. It's about really getting to know the person, getting to know if they share the same values that we do, they have the same vision that we do, they have the work ethic that we expect, and that they have the experience to be able to do the job. I will give you an example. One resume that we received, and I'm not telling you something that's unusual, but one resume we received is from a former teacher who applied for the high school principal and has been working for the last 14 years as a JetBlue flight attendant. I don't know about you, but they might deal with crisis in air, we're dealing with on ground. And so, you know, there's a lot of weeding that we do. It's a very strenuous process. It takes a long time. And at the same time this is going on, there are other districts putting out vacancies for those same positions. And we are all fighting for the best qualified candidates. So we try and get out early, we do a thorough search, but we also like to make sure that people that fit in with who we are are greeted by our community, are accepted by our Board, and that we can kind of, you know, get on with it and begin the start of what will be the next school year. So having said that, and all three candidates are still sitting here, which is a good thing, I want to introduce Mr. James Robinson, who is here with his wife and his two sons. And Mr. Robinson comes to us as the current Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations in the Westbury School District. But he has an impressive history. He started out, he has his BA in Communications from CW Post, he has an MBA from Dowling College, and is currently in a doctoral program at St. John Fisher College. He started out his career as a manager at ABC TV. So anybody aspiring, let's see, Mr. Robinson. He was a co-founder and president of three businesses that he started, so he has definitely an entrepreneurial spirit, which if you know me, you know that I definitely appreciate that quality. He went from there to the Director of Buildings, Facilities and Operations for the Freeport Public Schools, and then was tapped on the shoulder to be their Executive Director for Business. He became the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations in East Rockaway, was tapped on the shoulder again to become the Assistant Superintendent for Administrative Services in Nassau Bosse's, and is currently in the Westbury Schools. I will tell you that Mr. Robinson is not leaving Westbury, he is coming to Baldwin. He has heard about the things that we're doing and has expressed to me over many, many, many lengthy, lengthy, lengthy conversations, that his choice in applying for Baldwin was that he was intrigued with what we were doing. He knows a lot about our business office, he has looked at our financials, he's impressed with our business office and the way that our business offices run. And so I am asking you to give Mr. Robinson a warm Baldwin welcome. Our second appointment tonight is Mr. Neil Testa. Neil? Mr. Neil Testa. Sorry, he worked long and hard and paid a lot of money for that doctor, Dr. Testa. Received his Bachelor's in History from Adelphi University, his Master's in Adolescent Education and Social Studies, grades seven through 12 at Adelphi. He has a Certificate of Advanced Study from the College of St. Rose in Educational Leadership and Administration, and has his Doctorate in School Leadership from Concordia University. He started his career as a social studies teacher in West Hempstead High School, where he taught AP, APE, everything, American History, Government. He was a wrestling and football coach and assistant coach. He, of course, knows how wonderful our athletic program is at the high school, amongst other things. He is currently the Assistant Principal at Calhoun High School. He has been there for the past five years. He has oversight of instructional technology, student attendance, math, science, physical education, health, special ed, and world languages. He has been, in part, the architect of a new guidance and wellness center, which is really state-of-the-art. He is in charge of the master scheduling and college planning. He is here with his wife, his son, and his daughter, who will not be seeing very much of him come September. And so I ask you to please give Dr. Testa a warm Baldwin welcome. I want you to also know about Dr. Testa, that the things people told us about him is that he has developed very strong relationships with the parents and the teachers and the students in his school. He is widely respected. He is warm, he has even keel, he's a good problem solver. And I believe that we are lucky to have him as our high school principal, starting July 1st, so welcome. The third person that I want to introduce to you, I'm going to introduce to you in a way that in a million years you would not expect. So about a month ago, I received some videos from a 2nd grade class at Brookside School. And the students in Brookside School decided during an opinion writing unit in school that they wanted to share with me the qualities of a principal that they felt was important. And I believe that we have one of those 2nd grade students with us right now. Tristan, do you want to wave to everybody and validate what I'm saying? So today, I had the pleasure of surprising all of Brookside with the person who was chosen to be their new principal. So before I introduce this person, I am going to share with you the video that we showed at Brookside today. I just need to tell you, you will be laughing your heads off. But if you laugh loud, you won't be able to hear what comes next, and it's as funny as the first thing that you heard. So as hard as you want to laugh out loud, just hang on to it until the very end.
Chloe's here too. Wait, was in the video.
Chloe's here too.
Hi, this is Amaya and Sadia from the Brookside School. We think our new principal should play with us and talk to us.
Also, you should let us kids help you pick out a new principal.
We really think that when you hire a new principal, you should listen to the kids from the Brookside School. So we came up with some internal and external traits for you to look at.
You can trust us because we will not fight and we will pick the best principal.
We don't care if it's a dark person, light or light person or mixed.
We don't care if the principal is white or brown.
All we care is about this, that they are brave, smart, and we would like a man.
We only have two male teachers, which is our gym teacher and our music teacher.
Our new principal should be helpful, smart, attentive, and man.
Kind, smart, clever, brave, and sharing our language.
Because we want to have this small, other one about this.
Principals should be brave. For example, if we have a lockdown, they have to call 911.
Also, maybe the principal can be a problem solver. A problem solver is someone who comes up with good ideas, so they don't have to call you for help.
Our new principal should be a problem solver and maybe a genius.
Also, we think the new principal should play, jump with the kids who prefer to play, and also play with the kids who don't.
Finally, I think that a new principal should be friendly. Then they should say hello to us as we walk past.
Maybe we could play outside more.
Finally, we need an intelligent person that would tell us, "Hey, wait a second, that sounds like our dads."
Sorry, there are ham dogs.
As you can see, we really want our new principal to do all these things.
P.S., please don't hire a cyborg.
Brookside has been unbelievable. They gave me so much information about being a white principal. This is a tough decision. So let's see. We have a couple of candidates left. All right, they said male or female? We got that. I think this is fun.
Supposed to be fun.
I think this candidate's fun. Definitely has good personality, so I think I can check him out. Loves soccer. I did ask if he loves soccer. And he said he's learned soccer and he really likes the sport, so I think I can check that off. He's a problem solver. So this person is a hard principal and has problems all the time. References were outstanding, so a definite problem solver. Intelligent, genius, smart, clever, I would say fits all of those categories, so we can check that off. Helpful? I think so. I don't, I'm not comfortable checking that off, but I would have to say that he's helpful. I guess we'll find that out. Kind, seemed like a really kind, gentle soul to me. So I think I have confidence, checking that off. Definitely friendly. So the next thing I'll show you is how about a list of brave? Well, I'm a broken, he's a grown man.
Tristan said that.
I'm going to check that off. Loves history. I believe that's true. I can't say that 100%. Pretty sure he's not a cyborg. I'm comfortable with that, I'm going to check that off. So I think we have our candidate, and I can't wait for you to meet him.
Hello. This was great.
I am so excited to be a part of this amazing community. I'm going to tell you all about this, I'm really good. First, I'm not a cyborg. I love history, I love math, I love reading books, I love travel. I feel that I have a great sense of humor, I'm kind, I care about children, I care about our students, I care about our staff. I love to problem solve, so I don't need my mom to solve problems, but I don't even help me solve some of the problems we make faces together. I love to play soccer, I recently got into it, and I can get to play outside with our students very consistently. Is that the most important thing? I'm just super excited to be teaching at Brookside.
So please help me welcome our new, I mean, principal of Brookside School, Mr. Yunal Karakis. By the way, I took a lot because my family says I can't act, and they're probably right, but nevertheless. The kids were so excited and the faculty was so excited to meet Mr. Karakis today. I will tell you that, all you have to do is spend three minutes in a school with our students, but spending about an hour there. After we were done, we, Mr. Karakis and I, went to Ms. Maldonado's class, which is, you know, the students who created the video. And one young lady in the class said, "So do you like history or do you like to make history?" And I thought, "Are you kidding?" I was actually speechless. And I hugged her and I said, "You know, very rarely am I speechless, but I'm actually speechless right now." So I want to welcome the three of you. Thank you for accompanying our new administrators to the district. I hope you get a sense of, we don't do, like, business as usual, here is not business as usual in most places. So we're going to take a little break so you can all welcome and have some cookies and water and stuff and...
And then we'll reconvene for the meeting in about 15 minutes? Okay, meeting continues? Yeah, those chest pain cookies were great. Highly, thank you. So this goes back to you, Dr. Kami.
Okay, from exciting to weird. Budget presentation. What happened to our crowd? Okay, so we are kind of getting into those final stages of budget. So tonight's presentation is really a summary presentation of our budget. So going into 1920, we're looking at a total budget of $134,79,000. That's that middle column circled in red. Of that, of that figure, $95,480,000 is a combination of real estate, property taxes, and the star, property tax that we get. So the total tax levy in the proposed budget for the 1920 school year is $95,488,600. Included in that, or not included in that, not included in that, is an additional proposition that will be on the ballot for $151,000. That is to decrease the mileage for transportation for the elementaries and the high schools down to a mile and a half. And that'll make transportation for elementary, middle school, and high school, the mileage requirement a mile and a half instead of what it is now, which is two miles for the high school, two miles for the elementary. So we think that for $151,000, of which we will ultimately get transportation aid from the state, that that will help us to bring the mileage limit to a mile and a half, which is the state regulation for us. is the state regulation for us to receive aid on that. That's where the mile and a half comes from. So for those families at high school and the elementaries that have been kind of struggling with that mile and a half to two miles, this brings that mileage limit down. The revenue breakdown, just so that, you know, we try and educate everybody on, you know, on where this money, how it's divvied up, and so of a dollar, right, of the percentage 100%, 62% comes from real estate property. And that's not determined by us, that's really determined at the state level. 9% comes from STAR. So if you combine those two, you get 71%. That's the total revenue that we get from the residents. 1% are pilots, which is payment in lieu of taxes. Those are businesses that are granted special pilot status. 23% comes from state aid. 2% is coming from reserves, 2% is coming from an appropriated fund balance, and 1% is miscellaneous. So what's important to get from this slide is that 71% is coming from real estate value, and 23% is coming from state aid. I will tell you that as a board and as administrators, we are always lobbying the state that we don't get our fair share, and that you're asking us to produce budgets that are unfairly balanced, that our residents are paying. I will say, and I hear Mrs. O'Hagan sort of in the back of my mind every time, you know, we get to this point, that our budget, in comparison to other Nassau County budgets, is lower than the average, and I say this without bias of being your superintendent, what you get for the cost of this budget is so outstanding. You know, what we do to maximize dollars here is really unbelievable, but it is not at the expense of our students' education. The varied opportunities for our kids kindergarten through grade 12, I think is, in many respects, unprecedented. For example, that STEAM program that you heard about tonight, that was at no additional cost to the taxpayer. We figured out other ways to bring that kind of a program to our community. So, that is the proportion of how the budget is paid for. There are three components that we are required to present the budget. The three components are administrative, that's not administration, it's administrative. So those are all of the dollars around administrative tasks. That includes all the clerical workers who work for administrators, and includes all the benefits for those people. Capital, which is really related to mostly buildings and ground. And program, which is all of the things we see our kids involved in. And what you see in the changes there, from last, from this current school year to next year, administrative, that $89,000 is really basically flat. That is really a percentage change based on things like the increased cost of healthcare for all of the employees that fall under that category. Capital is an additional change of almost $1.5 million. Of that, over $1.2 million is for an elevator at Plaza. Because right now, we don't have... Bye, Mrs. May! Right now, Plaza doesn't have an elevator, and for ADA compliance, we need to have an elevator on Plaza. So we have additional funds in there for that. And program is an additional $1.4 million, which is really just an incremental cost from one year to the next, but it also, you know, includes the increase in health insurance and things of that nature for all of the people that work on the program side. So those are all of the teachers, for example. Overall, in $134 million budget, the change is $3 million. That budget is the same division in three areas. Administrative represents about 11%, capital represents almost 13%, and program is almost 76%. So you can see the majority of the money that is in the budget, the overwhelming majority, is going directly to our students. So what you will see on the ballot in May, you'll see four things. You'll see the proposition, which is for the budget. You will see a proposition for transportation, right? So that's to reduce the two miles down to a mile and a half for elementary and high school. You'll see a proposition, I'm getting ahead of myself, a proposition for, to open a capital reserve. What this means is, you are giving us the authority, basically, to open up a new account, putting that in quotes. There's no money that goes into that account. When we underspend a budget, we can take that money and put it in this capital reserve, but then we have to go to the community, and we have to ask the community for permission to spend that money. So this proposition does not cost the taxpayers any additional money, it's just permission to open up an account that will allow us to put money in to do capital projects on our buildings. You'll also see a proposition on the, that's the library budget. So the four things that you will see is our budget, a transportation referendum, the library referendum, and the referendum to open up a capital reserve. We always end on this slide, which is the purpose of our school budget. We are very focused on the students in our schools. And so the purpose of a school budget is to fund the education for the kids in our community. That's it.
I'm like, looking at the pictures, expecting you to fall into the pictures. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kami. Okay, comments from the board? We'll start on this slide, Mr. Press?
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything? Okay. And so, O'Hagan? I know you're gonna speak for both of us, right?
Well, yeah, this has been a busy week. I was very pleased to attend sports night and the mother-daughter banquet, and, you know, what can you say? It was absolutely marvelous. It involves between 150 and 200 girls. The performances were outstanding.
Very.
It was so well-attended. I was told that there were many people that wanted to get tickets that could not, because it was...
Sold out.
Sold out. So it's really a wonderfully successful program, and I just had fun, because I was a guest reader at Steele School and at Brookside, and there's nothing that's more fun than that. If you want to feel like a rock star, read to elementary school kids who are terribly impressed. And there's been a number of financial forums. This is the season, as we're coming up to the governor's budget, the release of governor's budget, and negotiations that are going on with that, so there have been a number of organizations. The Nassau Ridge and PTA had a legislative forum. Refit, which is a group we belong to, they had a legislative forum, and I can't tell you there's any interesting or good news from them, but I attended them anyway. So I will let it go with that.
Yes, I know the topic at the PTA legislative forum was primarily on the legalization of recreational marijuana. That was, I guess, 90% of the forum, Doris? Yes?
And, actually, that, if I'm not mistaken, that it was in the paper that it's going to be pulled out of the budget bill.
Oh.
And they, I was at a meeting this morning, and they attributed it directly to the advocacy on the part of PTA.
Well, that's great.
They had really come out strongly to say, "Slow down."
That's good news.
Let's see, yeah.
That's what happens when you have VIP on our board. Straight from the press. Thank you. Can you hear that?
Just in case anyone has any questions, there's a lot of data coming out of Colorado now of the unintended consequences of legalization of marijuana, and it's worth a look to see the kinds of things that they're going through as a result of it.
Mrs. Reed?
So, I was only able to attend one of the Founder's Day at Lenox. It was huge turnout, and I'm very appreciative for the invitation. As we all know, our girls didn't do as, they did a great job this season, but it ended a little short. One of the things I wanted to say, though, with respect to the outside of the girls working so hard to get to where they got to, it's amazing when you look in the stands and see the community support from everyone. You have the community, you have alum, you have high school alum, you have the basketball moms alum. It's just, it makes me proud to live in Baldwin, when I see that kind of support for our girls and our kids across the community. One other thing I wanted to talk to you about, or I just was speaking to Ryan's mom, Mrs. Healy, the one who gave the presentation for the STEAM, who just couldn't turn the mic, what type, you know, give up the mic. But she said she went on the trip as a parent chaperone, when they went to the lake to do the water sampling, whatever, and she thought she was just there to kind of make sure that the kids, you know, stay where they're supposed to stay. And so she said that they all had jobs, they were at the stations, the parents' chaperones, and she said it was just amazing to watch the kids and how engaged they were, and so she was very impressed with, you know, that. So she wanted me to share that with you guys, so there you go. So that's all I got.
Ms. Coolz?
So I was able to attend a preview for sports night, and it was amazing. I was lucky enough to be accompanied by my daughter, who participated in sports night all four years in high school. She was gold one year and blue the other three years, so I guess that's kind of where her allegiance lies, but she was even amazed. It was quite impressive, as always. And we're certainly so grateful for all of the advisors and all of the hours and hard work that go into that. Also, I was honored to be able to be a PARP reader at Brookside School for a fourth-grade class, and they were waiting for the books to come down from the office, so I got to chat with the kids for about five minutes, which almost turned into 20 minutes, because fourth graders like to chat as soon as you open that up. And it was a lot of fun. And I think that the, all of the programs that we saw here tonight, the presentations, were just amazing. It too makes me so proud to live in this town and be a part of this community, and I'm very excited about our new staff that we welcomed here tonight. And I look forward to the middle school and high school presentations, or productions, I should say, coming up. They should be great.
Great, thank you. At this time, we will open up for comments and questions from our audience. Oh, the podium is over there. We ask that if you have any questions, to state your name and address. You will have three minutes to ask your question, and just direct your question to myself.
Mia Phillips, 1509 Westerville Avenue. I just have a question. If the community does not accept the proposal for the capital reserve, what happens to the funds that are, the underused budget, the unused budget?
What happens is, we already have...
Turn it on.
Oh, I'm sorry. We already have one capital reserve in place now, that would allow us to set money aside. The reason we're going for such a large one right now is that the Controller's Office is, has encouraged districts to do larger ones, so that they have to do a bigger plan with it. We've been generally doing smaller ones over time and getting approval. We've had consistent approval for those. So, this is our way of, is helping us fund capital projects in the long term. So if we were not able to have this, we would have to just look at how we would fund some of the repairs and different things going forward. We probably would include in future budgets more transfers to capital to take care of some of the projects. So, and there's also other ways that funds, there are reserves that we're allowed to have under law to cover certain expenses, and we can contribute to those. The money is, at the end of the year, all the money has to be set aside into reserves and accounted for, and at the end of the year, the auditors come in and check that we have followed all the rules in that, and that our financial statements at the end reflect where all of that money is. This just provides a district with an option to address capital issues.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
My name's Annette Warner, and I live at 2552 Willard Avenue. And I have a comment, and two comments and a question. I'm very happy to sit in on the program and read about, or hear about the STEM program, because my son Timothy was cut, the budget was cut, and he used to go to Bozey's program. They used to have it at the, so I said, "School." And I'm really glad that they implemented this program within the district, and that this, so that we can be ahead in the game. That's why we're here. Anyway, I've been living here for about eight years, and I always was confused about the transportation. So if you can explain a little bit more to me in terms of the distance? Because I don't know if Willard Avenue is considered 1.5 miles or so? Because every time I called the high school and tried to explain that my son has asthma, and it's difficult to walk in the wintertime, I would always have to fight back and forth to drive him. And now that they're having just one lane on Grand Avenue, it's very, very disturbing to me, because I'm leaving, my last son is in senior, and he's gonna be out, but I'm thinking about the parents who are coming behind, how hard and frustrating it is, and even teachers going from the high school to the middle school, how difficult it is that we've created this problem. But anyway, I want to see, I want to, I want to say that I'm glad to see that it's been thought of in the budget, that the transportation needs, the distance needs to be less, because it's so hard, especially for kids who have problems with medical problems. And my other thing is, the library budget, I never understood, like, why it's so high. Seems as how so many people don't go to the library as much. So if this is the wrong forum to address it, you can give me some more information.
The library budget on the ballot, but we have nothing to do with the library budget. So you have to...
Presenting it, they'll be presenting the library...
Yeah, right. At the budget forum, the annual budget hearing.
Okay, and when is that?
The kid season.
I don't know. May 8th?
Yeah.
May 8th at the district office? No, at the high school. May 8th at the high school.
Okay.
And you can ask them that question.
And the library will be there to present their budget.
Great. And as I, I don't know if you addressed it, the distance, if we can get it in terms of streets? Because as I said, sometimes it's hard to see that 1.5 mile, two miles, and all that stuff in terms of...
So, the transportation office is where the mileage is calculated with a system called TransFinder. A mile and a half is the benchmark the state gives us. If anyone who goes below a mile and a half does not get aid back on their transportation costs, and we count on the transportation aid to offset those real estate taxes. What was done a number of years ago is the mileage went from a mile and a half to two miles. We're bringing it back to that mile, mile and a half.
But, I'm sorry, I'm trying to see how, what's the distance? Because as I said, I'm not a great with math, okay? To say that, "Oh, you know what? Willard Avenue, or this avenue is this amount of distance." Because I never understood, like, how far is that from the high school or what?
So that's calculated by a software that we have called TransFinder.
Okay.
It's not something, I mean, I wouldn't know off the top of my head what streets were within those boundaries.
Can't you...
But you can call Christina Orlando in the transportation office, and she'll be able to tell you what that, what that boundary is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, excuse me, Dr. Drapers. Alright, hearing none, we'll move on with the agenda. Board of Education approves the recommendations for services of the Committee on Special Education, SubCSC 504 Committee, and... Sub-SCSC 504 Committee and Committee on Preschool Special Education for Services in November and December 2018 and January and February 2019, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mr. Press. Any questions? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we cannot discuss this in public. Thank you, Mrs. Reed. I heard you whisper that to me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board of Education approves the home tutoring and special education service reports as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. Reed. Again, this cannot be discussed in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do it after. Yep. Board of Education acceptable thanks a donation of $5,259.30 from the Simon Youth Foundation and hands me a grant to Baldwin at Schubert for the 2019-2020 school year, as detailed in the Friday mailing. So moved. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan, seconded by Ms. Kools. Any questions?
I have a question. So in our mailing, ooh, this is so loud. In our, I'm not used to talking in a mic. In our mailing, we got a list of things that this grant is going to cover. There's a lot of stuff. Is there, are them, is it going to cover everything, or is there, really? Wow.
You guys are very frugal.
You guys are, I mean, you should see yours. You guys are really stretching that. So, okay, great. That's all I have.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Simon Youth Foundation.
Yes, thank you.
This is our second year receiving funds from, but this is the first time receiving this type of fund for them. Yep. Board of Education acceptable thanks a donation of school supplies from Sigma Gamma Real Sorority Incorporated to be distributed to students in need within the district, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. Any questions?
I just had a comment. My sister's part of this.
Duly noted.
I don't know if she contributed by that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Sigma Gamma Real Sorority for this kindness. Board of Education approves a one-year extension of the Suffolk-Baldwin Partnership Memorandum of Understanding Providing High School Students With An Authentic College Experience For The 2019-2020 School Year At No Cost To The District, As Detailed In The Friday Mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Ms. Kools. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. This is great. Board of Education approves the agreement with H2M Architects and Engineers to provide the district with an architectural and engineering, with architectural engineering services in connection with the pre-bond referendum, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kools.
Mr. Kools.
I'm sorry. Mr. Press. Tell him that I was talking about him. Mr. Press, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Board of Education approves the budget transfers over $10,000 from January 1, 2019 through January 31, 2019, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. You guys are on it today. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. As Board President, I am calling for consideration of the business items in tonight's agenda as consent items. This includes business items 6 through 16 and Roman numerals 11 through 13. Are there any items members would care to withdraw from consideration under the consent agenda for further discussion and a separate vote?
Press, do you still remember the Roman numerals?
Yes. It was important. Do I have a motion to approve the consent? You have something, Mr. Press?
No, I'm like, that's a lot of stuff.
Okay. So I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including business item 6 through 16 and Roman numerals 11 through 13.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Press, anyone before Don Press?
Hmm, I guess my right ear is working and not the left one today. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve item 6 through 16 and Roman numerals 11 through 13?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Kools.
Add second.
And seconded by Mrs. Reed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Okay. Just give me a moment. This, this, this. Wow, we did this. Nice. I'm up to here, right? Nice. Okay. The Board of Education approves the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Baldwin Union Free School District hereby authorizes the following proposition to be placed on the ballot of the May 21, 2019 annual vote. Shall the Board, shall the Baldwin Union Free School District be authorized to modify its public school transportation eligibility effective at the beginning of the 2019-2020 school year for grades K through 12 pupils? If they reside more than one and a half miles from the school, they legally attend at no cost not to exceed $151,000 and levy the necessary tax therefore. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Press. Have a question. Should it be the 6 through 8? Because you said elementary and high school. You didn't mention middle.
Middle school's at a mile and a half.
Okay, already. So that's why, so it will remain. Thank you. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other questions? I'm sorry. We're good? Okay. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. This is where you're supposed to say yea again. Yea.
Yay.
Yes. Yay, yay. Okay.
No yea till it passes.
Well, this is pre-ya. Resolution for the annual school election and budget vote ballot. The Board of Education adopts the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby adopts the annual school election and budget vote ballot notice of annual election and budget vote for the Baldwin Union Free School District to take place on May 21, 2019. And further, be it resolved that the district clerk is hereby authorized to take all necessary steps to publicize the notice as detailed in the Friday mailing. So moved. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Press. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Adoption of the 2019-2020 budget. The Board of Education adopts the 2019-2020 proposed budget in the amount of $134,079. Thousand dollars.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Press. That would have been. Any questions?
Second.
Seconded by, okay. Mrs. Reed.
Mrs. Reed.
No questions? Okay. Property tax. All those in favor?
Aye.
Losing energy. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Board of Education authorizes administration to prepare and file the 2019-2020 property tax report card, the administrative salary disclosure, the six-day budget notice, and any other 2019-2020 budget-related documents as required by law. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Kools. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The Board of Education approves the memorandum of agreement with the Nassau County Board of Election to rent the DS 200 scanning machines and auto-mark for the May 21, 2019 budget vote and board election, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Press. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Nomination of member of the Board of BOCES. The Board of Education, oh.
Do you have the three names? Ron Elbey, Fran Langston, and BA Shone.
Ron Elbey.
Langston.
BA Shone, and Lang.
Yeah, Langstaff.
Okay.
Right.
So the Board of Education as a component, District of, District of the Board of Cooperative Education Services of Nassau County, BOCES nominates Ron Elbey, BA Shone, and Fred.
Fran.
Fran.
That changes the name and the gender all at the same time.
Langstaff. As members of the BOCES Board, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Press. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Policies. The Board of Education has a second read and adopts the following policies. Policy 8220, Buildings and Grounds Maintenance and Inspection. Policy 8330, Authorized Use of School-Owned Materials and Equipment. Policy 9520.2, Family and Medical Leave. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Press. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The Board of Education has a first read of the following policies, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Policy 4531, Field Trip Policy. Policy 5020.3, Rights of Students with Disabilities Under Section 504. Other? Any other of the board? We're good? All right. So on that note, just a few, few important dates. Sweet surrender, drama production by the high school. There's one, there's a show tomorrow at 4 o'clock at the high school, Friday, March 15th, at 7:30 at the high school, Saturday, March 16th, 7:30 at the high school. Lenox has their spring concert for 4th and 5th graders tomorrow as well at 7:00 PM. Baldwin Civic Association has their meeting tomorrow at 7:30. Concerned Parents of Baldwin's meeting is Monday, March 18th at 7:00 PM. Plaza's Concert, Tuesday, March 19th at 9:30 PM? Is that right?
AM.
AM. Ball, Basketball Shootout, grades 4 and 5, the March 19th, Tuesday, March 19th at 3:30 at the high school. I'll skip a few. District Strings Festival, Wednesday, March 20th, 7:30 at the high school. Lion King Junior Production by the middle school. Thursday, March 21st, 3:45 PM at the middle school. Friday, March 22nd, 7 o'clock at the middle school. Saturday, March 23rd, 7:00 PM at the middle school. Please come out to these events, everyone, and support all of these great events. The children are working really hard on these. School is closed for elementary school students on Friday, March 22nd. Sweets and sweets, Monday, March 25th, 7:30 PM at the high school. There's a science symposium at the middle school on March 27th at 7 o'clock. I saw it on the calendar. Did they change it?
That was the same day? Same day or a different day?
No, the days are different.
So it's not that date?
Right.